Uh, please show them the public keys.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, do we have anyone here for community comments or anything that's not on tonight's agenda? All right, hearing none, um, let's move to presentations and presentations and reports. Up first is Deputy Fire Chief Tim Walsh.
Madam Mayor.
To talk about the fire department.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the approve the agenda. So excited to hear about that.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Perfect. We have a motion by Councilmember Henry.
I'll second.
And a second by Councilmember Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion passes. All right, now Deputy Chief Walsh, tell us about your, uh, live burn.
So, we have an opportunity, um, to burn in an actual structure, an old retired home, um, just south of the fire station. And we're planning on doing that on April 23rd, probably starting about 7:30 in the morning. We are going to be doing some hot drills, so we'll be inviting some of our neighboring fire departments to come over and, uh, train several firefighters until probably noon, one o'clock. And then, we hope, depending on weather, um, do a, do a total burn down. One of the things that we're concerned about is the neighborhood to the east of the property. And, uh, we're gonna watch the weather pretty close on that, so if there is a, a wind or a breeze that's taken a lot of smoke, and we'll know that throughout the day as we start fires and put fires out and those types of things. If there's a lot of smoke that goes over that neighborhood, we'll, we'll probably stop that. And then, maybe pick a night where it's really cool outside and light it up and the smoke should go straight up in the air and um, we've got a contractor that we've worked with several times that is, um, bringing several instructors and burn instructors. So they'll be doing all the lighting of the fires and setting them up and all we get to do is go in and watch it, put it out, overhaul it, go back out and rotate in the, through the system. On average, we, we, we hope to get 12 to 14 burns out of that building and then, uh, then it'll come down, so. Do you have any questions?
You burst my bubble.
Oh, sorry.
How many firefighters will participate in this?
Um, well, there'll be our departments, so probably 33 there, or roughly about. And then, we'll probably get six or eight from the other four departments that we'll invite from around us. So, we hope to have a pretty good group. And, uh, one of the things we are gonna do is the last, the fire academy that graduated, I think that was in December. We're gonna invite all those folks back because sometimes they didn't get an opportunity to burn in an actual structure, they burned in a, a container. So, bring those folks back and actually give them the real stuff and do some hands-on teaching with those folks, so. Hopefully, most of them will show up. There was 26 of them, so. I'm hoping it's gonna be a good group.
I think that's great, Tim. Um, even though you're gonna be close to the fire station, who's going to be watching the fire station for calls?
Um, we'll have a group that'll be standing by for that. And then, if we have to, we'll call mutual aid in, you know, if some, if, if it is something bigger. But we do always have a group that's standing by for medicals and fire calls and crashes and any of that kinda stuff, so. We'll have, uh, six or eight that will respond with our apparatus, so.
Okay, sounds good. I assume there'll be social media telling folks, "Don't call this one in, we know that it's burning."
Yeah, we, we'll notify dispatch that, that we're doing it and what time we're starting and and they, usually if they do get some calls, they kinda explain to people what it is.
Okay.
Yep.
And Mayor and Council, we do, we've been working with Deputy Chief Walsh and Chief Trimble on a mailer, so, um, the River Oaks neighborhood primarily, so off of Fourth Street and those neighborhoods, we'll get a, kind of a postcard uh, prior to the burn, letting them know about it, um, and that, as Tim mentioned, should the wind be coming from a certain direction, that the live burn will be postponed.
Yep.
So, we'll get a draft out to the council prior to that being sent.
Any other questions?
No.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, all right, item 5.2, the bluff ordinance review. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Let me just see if I can pull my screen up here. It's not as exciting as controlled burning.
Nothing is. Do you wanna stay for this presentation? You just really teed it up that it's not gonna be very exciting.
Tim, run.
I got a training to go to.
You got a burn schedule.
All right, so this, um, council, this conversation and discussion was prompted during the Brookview review. There were a lot of questions about the city's bluff, uh, ordinance. And so, I put together a memorandum that was in your packet. Um, hopefully you had a chance to at least review it briefly. That includes just an overview of the ordinance, what it does, what it means, um, um, and then some, I think overarching themes about enforcement and how sometimes certain, um, exceptions or deviations from the ordinance can be, uh, put into effect. So, just some background on the ordinance itself. Uh, it is a zoning regulation. Uh, it's in chapter 50 of the city code. And it defines bluffs along with, uh, what's known as a tier-one buffer and a tier-two setback. And Dan and Aaron are both here from Bolton and Mink, and if there's questions about, you know, delineating bluffs and figuring out the technicality behind that, I'm sure they would be happy to answer those questions. Those are more in their wheelhouse than mine, but there is a process that's outlined in the ordinance itself that talks about how we define what a bluff is. You know, once the bluff area is defined, um, the tier-one buffer is 25 feet beyond that, and then the tier-two setback is another 25 feet from that tier-one buffer. So, um, it's really 50 feet beyond the actual bluff itself, um, that the ordinance itself regulates. So what does it regulate? Um, different activities such as, um, there are limitations on structures that you can build, prohibitions on either accessory or primary structures. There are also prohibitions on decks and other things. It also talks about how you cannot alter or remove vegetation in, uh, certain areas that are defined in the ordinance as either a bluff or a tier-one setback. Um, another important thing to keep in mind as well is that when plating property that contains a bluff, much like the recent Brookview development, um, has, has gone through preliminary plat, at the time of final plat approval, there will be a mechanism that will be uh, determined at that time to protect the, the bluff and the tier-one setback, or excuse me, the tier-one buffer permanently, um, in a way that would, uh, mirror the city's bluff ordinances, um, just so that if anybody tries to purchase property that might be affected by that, they would see there's a document recorded that says, um, you know, "Take a look at the Carver bluff ordinance before you buy this because it might be important to see," so. Um, there are exceptions to the limitations that are built into the ordinance. For example, stairways, lifts and landings are allowed, uh, via a conditional use permit if an applicant can meet certain conditions. Um, the removal or alteration of vegetation in the tier-two setbacks is allowed for turf or, or, um, lawn installation. Uh, there, limited movement is allowed, uh, within the tier-two setbacks if there are no adverse effects and that ordinance actually gives the building official the authority to approve that. Um, and then there are a number of exceptions for lots that were of record as of June 5th, 2005. I assume that was because that's when the ordinance was first enacted. It doesn't specify that in there, but that's a typical provision you would see, um, and a date that would only come up, you know, if that were the case. So I, I, I don't know if staff knows about the history, but.
I was on the planning commission, I can confirm.
Got it. 2005.
Yep.
All right. And then, um, flexibility can also be attained, um, through variances which are authorized by state statute and the city's ordinance, um, along with, um, planned residential developments. Again, there was some flexibility granted to Brookview and that was referenced in the memorandum. There were a lot of questions about that trail, that field-fit trail that, um, the intent is for the city engineer to work with the developer on a location for that trail which will go through the bluff area. And that was, um, requested by the city, in fact, um, in exchange for some of the deviations that the developer actually asked for with respect to the setbacks and the lot sizes that were gonna be less than what would otherwise be allowed in that. So, um, the city actually threw its ordinance approving the rezoning for Brookview and tying that rezoning back to the, uh, final plat ultimately being approved if and when that happens, approved a field-fit trail. Um, and that's okay because in planned residential developments, the council has the authority to make deviations from zoning regulations such as the bluff ordinance. And, um, you know, effectively what you're doing is amending or making a limited exception to an ordinance with another ordinance. Just like you'd have the right to repeal an ordinance, you can adopt an ordinance that makes some, you know, changes or deviations to an ordinance in cer- certain circumstances. Uh, the last thing that the memorandum talks about, albeit briefly, is some of the enforcement tools which are similar to the city's enforcement tool that comes to other code violations. For example, stop-work orders can be issued by a building official. If somebody's out in the bluff building a structure that they shouldn't be building, you can send, um, your building official out there to, to, um, post an order. Um, also, there are nuisance abatement proceedings and hazardous property proceedings that can be pursued, um, criminal prosecution, um, and then you can of course ask for what's called injunctive relief or other civil remedies. An inju- a couple of injunctive relief would be if you're gonna go ask a judge for a restraining order or a temporary restraining order to get somebody to stop doing something that's illegal. Um, you could go to the courthouse and, and ask for that on relatively short notice if you can meet certain, um, conditions. So, um, the last thing I put on here is, just like with any other code enforcement matter, um, if somebody's violating an ordinance like the bluff ordinance, it's really gonna depend in terms of enforcement tools on what makes sense in that given situation. Not all code violations are created equal. Some are considered more serious or more dangerous than others. Um, and so, you know, i- if somebody were violating the ordinance, I would expect staff to, um, have a discussion about that. Maybe potentially present the council with options about how to enforce if we're talking about, you know, formal, um, litigation or something more, you know, serious than, than sending letters. But, um, again, that will always depend on, you know, the situation and the pros and cons of, of the various tools in, in each situation, so. That is a quick summary of, of the memo. I don't know if anyone, I know there were some community comments during Brookview about the bluff ordinance, and I know Brent, um, had let some folks know that there would be this discussion tonight and the council would be talking about the ordinance in, um, in general. So, um, I don't know if the council has questions about the ordinance. I'm happy to answer them if you do.
Any questions? Glenn?
I think, um, I'm more concerned about the enforcement of the, if there's certain sized trees cut down inside the bluff, um, I'm just wondering what the repercussions will be for, you know, once that eight-inch tree's cut down. What are the potential ramifications in, in fees and fines or what can we do as a city to make sure it doesn't happen?
Well, um, and Aaron Smith can talk a little bit about this too, but, um, with any development, there's always gonna be a, a tree removal, a tree inventory.
Yep.
Prepared. Um, developers are expected not only to adhere to that, um, through the city approvals, but also through the development agreement. They'll be contractually obligated to adhere to that. Of course, if a tree gets removed, um, there's no real remedy for putting that tree back.
It's gone.
As you know, it's gone. Um, and so you're left with, uh, potential remedies. Under the development agreement, you could, also consider criminal prosecution. I mean, that, um, that could be a, that could certainly be a repercussion if somebody's violating the bluff ordinance, um, in that way because, um, we're not talking about the development agreement, we're talking about, um, you could be looking at a misdemeanor violation now. I understand that's difficult when you're talking about a large-scale development and maybe somebody did it accidentally. Maybe it was an employee of a contractor who was out there and didn't realize it, but, um, you know, the goal is, and the city has some control over who contractors are that are hired for this work because the developers have to screen them all through the city and make sure that they're licensed and bonded and reputable. Um, if there have been issues with them in the past, we typically build in language that says you can't use them, you know, if, if we don't approve them. So, um, I think we'd have to, well, hopefully, first of all, it doesn't happen. But if it does, we'd have to talk about how to address it, make sure it doesn't happen again. Decide whether there's going to be any, um, action taken or options to take action under the development agreement and potentially, um, it could trigger some additional tree removal requirements because, you know, the, um, in any development situation, you're gonna, tie in the city's tree preservation ordinance and all those requirements into the approvals. They have to sometimes pay a fee for however many they're removing or agree to, you know, plant a certain amount of, of trees to replace them, so. It would depend on the situation, but, um, again, we have things built into the system to hopefully prevent it from happening. And if it did happen, it would hopefully just be, um, very minor issue and it would be due to oversight, but again, um, I hope that doesn't end up being the case.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Christie?
Um, on page two, um, in the second paragraph, where it talks about the restrictions on the construction of structures, in the, all the bluff, the tier-one, the tier-two, so that, for, for example, principal and accessory structures, concrete pads, et cetera, decks, are prohibited, but then it says other structures such as fences, walls, stairways, lifts and landings are permitted. Um, but they would need a conditional use permit and have to meet design requirements. So, I, is this, so what, you can put a wall there, you can put a fence there, you can have your stairway landing there, but you can't have a concrete patio there. So, and I'm specifically looking at the Brookview development and referencing that right now so that, because those, um, building padlines are right up to that, that edge of the buffer. So, is this our ordinance or are we pulling this from some other entity? Because are we being more prohibitive on certain aspects than we maybe need to be? If a patio, excuse me, if a concrete patio pad is, is, is that coming from somewhere else, then why are we restricting? I can understand, you're not cutting into the bluff and removing it, but if you're putting something on the top of it that technically isn't, you know, digging out a basement in the area or something like that, why are we restricting something like that?
So, from my understanding, the bluff ordinance was drafted by staff, so there's not a jurisdiction that oversees our bluff ordinance specifically. So, it is something we could discuss. I know particularly, particularly with Brookview, Kurt mentioned, in situations where there is a bluff, they typically build the pad into the house design. So it's there day one, just to allow people to know, "Okay, I have this patio, it is there." So, no one else, um, has higher power than our bluff ordinance, so if it's something you wanted to discuss, we absolutely could.
Okay. Um, I am happy to see this and I was actually going to during our, um, council request time was to take a, take a look at this at a work session and just talk a little bit about our bluff ordinance and, um, you know, this has been in place since 2005. How do we, let's take a look at it, see where we're at with it. It's almost 20 years old. But I just, I, those are some things that I maybe wanna flesh out that maybe tonight we're not gonna get that in depth with it because we don't have all of the, all the answers to the questions that might come out, but I think it might be worth just taking a look at some of those. Of course, I, you know, appreciate the bluffs that we have, but when it comes to some of our constraints in certain areas, for putting in some of these developments, if we're going to do things in here where we're going to make it a PRD so we can get the trail through the benefits, then is there another benefit that we can do to make those home lots a little bit more usable for those folks?
Lauren?
I don't have any questions. I appreciate your summarizing these things, especially the tier-one, tier-two. Just kinda some of the terminology, the total.
I don't have any other questions. I was heard of developing this bluff ordinance and I remember conditional use permits that we turned down afterwards. And I know there was a lot of cases of people wanting to make their lots more usable. But, we also, I think as a planning commission, just really took the position of, we wanted to define certain structures that were, mm, more significant to put in, right? You don't just pour a concrete pad over dirt necessarily. You have to put in layers underneath it and stabilizing. It's a little bit more of an effort versus I put some fence up. And so, I mean, that was kind of the thinking, kind of going into it. Um, we wanted to look at a little bit more temporary items versus really permanent items, um, in the ordinance, and that's how we looked at it. I am totally open to discussing this and reviewing this, and I know we did some comparison at the time to other cities as well around bluff ordinances and tried to draw upon that experience as well. Keep looking at it.
Thank you. I don't have any, um, objection to taking a look at this, but I do think that we've got a good ordinance here. I don't necessarily wanna soften the bluff ordinance so that we can allow for somebody's patio or anything like that. You know, I think especially if we're gonna use it, the example of Brookview, when folks are buying those lots, they know, they should know what the requirements are. And they should have a builder or, uh, a Realtor or someone, a lawyer, who's gonna hopefully kind of hold their hand through that process and help them understand what this means, especially in those lots that are really toeing the line of the tier-two setback. So, um, I think that that's a unique perspective, right? Like they're gonna be building a house right there, so they should know about it. There are, you know, owners down the line that perhaps won't be as well-informed or educated about it, but I think because we're dealing with new construction here, I want to make sure that we enforce a really strong bluff ordinance so that we don't have folks belling into that.
Sure, and I, for me, part of the reason I wanna take a look at it is if, when we're looking at some of the homes even that we have right now in Carver, they're certainly in the bluffs, they've been, they've been there for quite some time. They're unique lots, right? And they're beautiful and I think that there's something that's, makes that interesting. Now, I'm not saying we should go hacking away at all the bluffs, that's not what I'm getting at, but if you think, if you jump out of the city of Carver and you look at, you know, some of the old homes in Bloomington and things like that, my old, like, how old, 60s, right? Like the 70s? Uh, certainly not historic downtown Carver, but you, there's some that are up in the hills and they have, there, it creates some uniqueness to what is available also in, in those towns and, I don't know, I think, I just would like to do, or do something, taking a look at a, uh, uh, ordinance that we have had for a long time and making sure it still fits correctly. Um, a lot of our developments may be moving away from the hills now, but I don't think that, I don't think that that negates us from wanting to, at least for me, from wanting to take a look at it.
Timing-wise, I'm just thinking out loud, how would this affect Brookview? Do we change a bluff ordinance on a property that's gonna be potentially developed on a bluff that seems like kinda a little not along the process?
Now that they've received preliminary plat approval, it would, um, that would be in, it would be considered grandfathered in, even if you changed your bluff ordinance last week, for example.
Okay.
It'd be, they've got some entitlements to come in for final plat, um, within a period of time and not have to accommodate updated ordinances, um, just under state law. So that wouldn't affect Brookview, but, um, it sounds like the discussion is being sort of based on a more global or bigger picture, um, view of the city
Yes.
and of different lots, that kind of a thing.
Hundred percent.
I assume.
I was just diving down more to the
Yep.
three-foot level. What if we were to kind of soften or loosen the ordinance? Although I don't know that we have the...
It, I mean, that could certainly affect the rights of those owners in Brookview that are now currently dealing or, you know, would, if Brook, once Brookview comes in and gets final plat approval, um, you know, maybe there's owners that in two or three years wanna look at putting a deck or a patio out there, but they couldn't under today's ordinance. You could change the ordinance now and then that would allow them to be able to do that maybe in two or three or four years.
And if I could jump in, I, if we were to start this process today, knowing the timeline of Brookview, we would see Brookview before the ordinance adoption. So, like Dave said, it would be an improvement to the homes that are built under our current ordinance, most likely.
But you just said that if, if this, let's say we made a change, whatever that might be, we changed whatever, um, Brookview then, later, once that becomes, you know, is approved, then they could go back, right? And do, they could do something. This isn't, I'm not bringing this up for Brookview development, not specifically. Um, I just, once, let's say Brookview's in and the house has been there for, like you said, three years. Let's, just throw in something, let's say we approve, you can put concrete patios of 10 feet in there. They would then be allowed to do that once we changed the ordinance.
Absolutely.
Okay.
It would be helpful for our discussion if we have any data on conditional use permits that we've allowed in the bluffs and like on a case-by-case basis on homes that were built after 2005, or any rejections that we've done.
Anecdotally, I can say there haven't been many.
I know.
Um, just based on my time here and then some information I've gotten from some seasoned planning commission members. Jim Wiegand is a really great resource for the bluff ordinance, but I would say if there are any, it would be a handful at max.
I'm guessing, but it would be good reference for us to kinda see what have people been putting in those areas, um, just to kinda understand the demand.
Will that include, will that include the denials then too? Do you have, do you keep that on record? Because it'd be nice to see what people, again, with what you just said, what people are wanting to put in and what they haven't been able to.
I would say I don't think we have a tracking mechanism for that, so I suspect the information we give would be mostly anecdotal at this point. Just going back to 2005 is tricky.
Sure.
And for what it's worth, um, the CUP is only available for a very little number of things, staircases, landings. And so maybe that's overall discouraged folks from coming in and, I mean, who wants a staircase to nothing, right? I mean, um, many times, maybe a, a small landing, but that would be an expensive endeavor to put in a bluff, for just a small, you know, maybe viewable landing area or something. So, um, I only say that without any history of the applications, but there may not be a ton because there's not much to be able to ask for.
So, this is just a little bit procedural and I don't know if, if, something you'll know. So, if you were to put in certain fence posts or, uh, landing with your stairs, I mean, footings have to go in for that, right? So, those footings then would technically be allowed by what we have in the ordinance right now.
They are allowed as long, yeah, and maybe one of the reasons a lot have been denied, um, and for those that know more, chime in, please. Um, I assume it's because of the conditions that are required are pretty hard to meet. Or, it, on a surface level, I looked at them and I thought to myself, it might be pretty hard for somebody to be able to meet these conditions, to be able to do that. I could be wrong, but I'll be interested to see what the, what the history looks like, if there is much of history. But it does allow footings.
Okay. Great.
All right, so we'll take another look at the bluff ordinance.
Just, uh, drilling down a little bit into the detail, Mayor and Council. When you say take a look at it, I'm hearing specifically just what's allowed in certain setbacks and what those setbacks are. Cause I would say like, the totality of the ordinance was referenced in Dave's memo, but if there's something you wanna drill down to, is that what I'm hearing is those specific improvements in certain setbacks?
You know, I think my, let's just say helpful too, if we, if there's things that we've mentioned that we're denying, like you're denied a patio, you're denied this, how that compares to being able to put footing in, footings in for a...
Yeah, I think she's saying what's restricted and what's allowed, right?
So there can be some comparison also of that.
Yeah, I, I-
That's building official stuff.
Sure. I, I don't believe that, I can verify this, I don't believe that data exists. I don't, the conditional use permit variance is about 99% certain. We haven't done any in my time here. And I know our consultant planner, previous to Aaron, you know, would strongly discourage folks from even submitting an application, so even though there were folks that maybe were interested in a CUP or a variance, it was discouraged to the point where one wasn't taken, so there might be some information out there floating. Um, but we're not gonna have a record just to clear or level expectations. We're not gonna have anything to compare of who applied for this and who was approved and who was denied.
Right.
I mean, I can think of a resident in the Carver bluffs who wanted to, um, construct a pool in their backyard and I think there was some pretty acrimonious conversations between the council and this property owner at that time. So we'll have a little bit of that, but there won't be like your chapter and verse, you know, these five conditional use permits were applied for and these, uh, two of them out of the five were approved. I just wanna make sure you-
But you'll have, you'll have which ones were approved, right?
We won't have, there, there haven't been any.
Oh, there hasn't been any?
Not to my, at least in the 12 years that I've been here, there haven't been any applications that I'm aware of.
Okay. Well, I wouldn't mind, um, again, so that we don't go too far, we've got other things on the agenda and we can talk at a work session, but maybe if we take another look at what a few other cities who have major bluffs are doing also? Cause if you, if this was formed after looking at a, a few others, right? Cause we probably didn't reinvent the wheel all on our own. And see where their current ordinances are at, if anything matches or is more lenient or more restrictive.
And that's what I, I think I'm hearing, zeroing in on it, it's the improvements that are made in the bluff is what you wanna look at. It's not the entirety of the-
It's not the definition of a bluff.
No.
It's not the definition of a setback.
It's just what can be done in a bluff. Just what can be done in a bluff and variances in that whole kind of ball of wax.
Can I just ask too, what is the end goal you're looking for? To loosen up the restrictions on building in a bluff?
It could be. It could be. Because there, personally for me, I, like you said, I appreciate that we are protecting the bluffs. I think that there is maybe parts of it that are a little overly restrictive in some areas, but I don't want to go hard against something when, again, I haven't done some of the research to say, what is, you know, what has the city of Bloomington done in the past? What is there on their books right now if they, if someone wants to build? And I guess Brookview Development probably came, probably brought it a little bit more to life, because we started looking at it and talking about it again. And we haven't, you know, we haven't been so in-depth on that recently. But we have some more developments that are coming to the west here, and we're going to be along some of these same lines. And we've had some issues with how things can be built in areas that are moving west too. So I think for me, I would feel more comfortable than moving to the future, saying, okay, we've done the, our, again, our due diligence after an ordinance that's heading towards twenty years, does this still fit? Does it not fit? Do we, is there things that we can allow now that are going to make some of these developments a little more unique and possibly have a little more options for them as they come in?
But keep in mind, I want to reiterate what Mr. Anderson said, is that if we change our ordinance, it affects everybody. So people in my development can go start putting in decks and sheds and pools and whatever we decide to allow.
Right. Absolutely. Yep, that has not escaped me that that means. A whole lot of people who may, you know, may want some things too, but I'm not saying throwing it to the, you know, throwing it to the wind here either, so.
I guess I'm curious, and before we direct staff to go down that rabbit hole, I, I think we're in a good place with our bluff ordinance. I don't have a desire to look into it with an end goal of softening it and to allow for more building closer to a bluff. Council, do we have any other folks who, knowing that that's kind of the end goal, want to go?
I don't think of this as a rabbit hole. I would like to look at it. What would help me is almost even some visuals of like to, you know, see, you know, what, most likely at someone's backyard and say, okay, this is something that somebody, you know, have to be from a different community, you know, maybe it's a deck patio, you know, here's something that somebody did, this would be allowed here, this would not be allowed here. Or here's how you would, here's why it wouldn't be allowed. Like, just, just with knowing that, you know, we are already doing a lot of things to, you know, keep things, you know, not just the historic, but keep things natural. And like, we do have a lot of bluffs, but yet for the individuals who, this is their private property and, and they just really, you know, approach it a different way to be able to have a few more things that we could possibly say yes to. But I would have to know more about what their project is and how it would look without having to wait for each person to come and, you know, ask for, you know, is this acceptable? But to be able to see some things, you know.
I think we could get you written examples, but I think photo examples would be hard, just because, like, if you looked at a map of Carver today, you can't see where a bluff is. It requires delineation. So we could get some anecdotal information from other cities, we could learn from them, but I don't think it would be a picture comparison.
Okay.
Joy, thoughts?
I mean, you know, I, I was part of this, I feel strongly that we, we do have a good ordinance. You know, we really tried to put a lot of thought around not just preserving the natural bluff, but also preventing issues with disturbance of the bluff. I lost water at my house for five days because we had intrusion on a bluff and a large storm knocked a whole bunch of it out and took out some water pipe. And so, you know, it's, it's not just about the protection of the bluff, which is important, but it's also like what disturbing a bluff can do or can mean for adjacent properties. And so that was also part of it. So I think that it was having a good, clear definition that the ordinance does, where the, how do you measure a bluff? What is it? Et cetera. You know, we also have some man-made bluffs, if you will, from some of the rail, old railroad lines that went through here. And so we had a lot of conversations of is that a true bluff in a development and things like that. So we wanted really clear definition, which I think the ordinance did. We also wanted to be very careful about more permanent structures within any of those setback areas. And also removal of vegetation, which could alter the bluff, water runoff, et cetera, within that space. So I think we were really careful about it and realized, you know, you all weren't on the planning commission going through these details, so I totally also understand where you're sitting. And I think if we want to take a moment and get more educated as a council about the ordinances and feel more comfortable about the definitions and that they're, what we think is appropriate for our community, compare it with other communities, I think it's okay to do that, too.
Well, it's nice having an expert on the spirited debate from the planning commission from years back. As I recall, it was rather spirited.
Quite.
A lot of this, if I'm not mistaken, has something to do with the Met Council as well, or not, with...
So this is, I'm assuming a little bit out of my lane, but at one point, there is a conversation related to the bluff land, if you will, is, is counted as non-buildable in the city's calculations for density. And so the argument is made by previous, I would say, consultant staff, that if you adjust your setbacks in buildable area, that'll impact the city's overall density. So I'm not educated enough in that specific topic to tell you if that is, can be verified or not, but I know that that had, had come up in several discussions, specifically when the bluff ordinance was discussed and possibly changed. I know it has been amended in the last ten years and the setbacks have changed. So, you know, at a minimum, you know, we can put together, I would say, a bluff ordinance review light. And if you feel like you need more information beyond that, you know, we can tell you what the setbacks are, we can give you some information from other cities. And then if you want to, you know, press go and say, let's do a full-blown, like, let's cut bolted mink loose, let's do a review, let's get at maybe some drawings, et cetera, we can do that if that's acceptable to the council. So we can take this in a baby step, we'll get you the information that I feel like we're hearing tonight that you're wanting. And then if you choose to go for more, then we can ramp up our staff time and effort.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. I would also like to say that being one who lives in the bluff and who grew up in the bluff and has watched a lot of stuff being built in the bluffs, I would like this looked at so we can have a clear definition of what can or can't be done. Because when I got red tagged for putting in my retaining wall up front, the inspector failed to recognize that I was building it on a previously existing footing, therefore it was allowed. So there's things that I'd like clarification for, for everybody involved. So that's my thoughts.
All right. Do you have the direction you need? Whoever's working on this. All right.
Whoever's working.
Doesn't matter.
Whoever's working on this will be, will be watching the main.
We'll see it then.
Okay. Let's see, we have no public hearings tonight. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by council member Henry.
I'll second.
Second by council member McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, item eight point one, the fee waiver program for affordable housing. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We recently reviewed at a work session a fee waiver policy at March, the March twenty-first meeting. So I'm going to give a brief overview of the program and then we'll open it up for discussion. I'm having flashbacks.
Did it freeze?
Oh, no, we're good. So at the work session on March twenty-first, we discussed the same program, the fee waiver policy, and the council requested that we send it to a regular meeting after getting some more feedback. So we've done a little bit of work in the policy, so I'll give an update on that, as well as talk through some of the details. So where this all started was an initiative in the strategic plan was to develop shared messaging, shared language, a better understanding of what affordable housing is for the city of Carver. So we had the CDA, the Carver County Development Agency, put together a really great presentation that allowed us to share a conversation, but then also develop some goals about affordable housing, what it means for Carver, which developed into the Housing Action Plan, which the city adopted in January of 2022. So on the screen now is the full Housing Action Plan. So the first page, largely facts. Second page recaps the conversation with, we had with the CDA. Page three is the important page tonight. We talked through some tools and then definitions and acronyms, just because I think before we had this conversation, affordable housing meant a lot of things to a lot of different people. So working to narrow it in, so when we are discussing it here in this room, but also with residents, it means the same thing across the board. So the tools that were discussed at the time of adoption of the Housing Action Plan, one was reduction in sewer and water connection charges if a developer can demonstrate effective affordable housing and meet set requirements as determined by the city, which comes into play with the program that's in the packet tonight. So talking through, you saw the slide really recently in March, but just to give some more detail, the fee waiver policy is only applicable for residential units, residential projects with affordable units. So it's typically workforce or senior housing, and it only applies to the city portion of connection fees. So when we issue building permits, there are fees that run kind of a gamut across the board. So things like park dedication, Met Council fees, pastor agency, not be affected by this program. It's strictly city sewer and water connection. Something that I think is important is that the city council will review the application of the waiver. So that's where the language got looped up between March second meeting and tonight, March twenty-first, sorry, and tonight, is that it allowed some deviation. So it didn't feel like your project is going to be approved if it can meet X, Y, Z. The affordability must be guaranteed for twenty years. So working through with the city attorney, how we would memorialize that, making sure that we get reporting to make sure that, in fact, the units are staying affordable, which is important. And that information stays with the property, not the owner. So if a developer sells a property, the units need to continue to be affordable through reporting, or else they would be required to pay back the fee waiver policy that they were given. Some information I have on a couple of other slides is that it's tiered on affordability of a project. So if someone can come in and give a really affordable unit versus someone who's working with a higher number, it's tiered differently. And the maximum waiver is to not exceed $250,000 for any project, no matter tier. So thirty, fifty, and eighty percent area median income, the max across the board is two fifty. So talking through some of those details, in the Carver fee schedule for 2022, sewer connection charge is $980 per unit, $8,900 for water connection. So that's charged at every building permit. So single-family house pays each one of those once. Where a multifamily project, if there are sixty units, pays that sixty times over. So each unit requires one connection. Again, this does not require, or does not include the Met Council connection, which is $2,485 per unit. We are strictly the pastor agency, so we don't collect any of that money. It comes in at time of building permit, we give it to the Met Council. So this program does not contemplate waiving that at all. The program, again, is based on area median income, or AMI, which is a shared definition we got from the Housing Action Plan. So the city of Carver, our median household income, it's relatively high comparative to Carver County as well as the state. So the numbers that we're using are thirty percent of that number is about $34,000 per household, fifty percent area median income is about $57,000, and eighty percent is about $90,000. So that sets the tiers for the amount of fee waiver that would be applicable to each project. So thinking about the thirty, fifty, eighty, it depends on where the units come in based on AMI, that the developer would receive the waiver. So obviously, if the area median income is at thirty percent, developer pays thirty percent of those charges, same at fifty, and same at eighty. So it's tiered again based on the affordability of each unit. So the policy is included in the packet. Again, there were some alterations that loosened it up a little bit to give you a little bit more discretion. The question came up at the March twenty-first work session about what that means for our long-term plan. Have we thought about this? What does it mean? So our current long-term plan does not contemplate a fee waiver program, just because we weren't quite there yet when we were developing the previous version. We hadn't had the conversation with the CDA, we didn't have the Housing Action Plan. So next steps would be a revision to the long-term plan, which is summer 2022, which feels like it'll be here in five more minutes. So we'll start that discussion soon, and we'll include some information with the fee waiver policy, should the council choose to move forward with it tonight. So at this point, I'll open it up for discussion.
That's nothing from Kristi?
I have nothing more to add. I mean, and I know, I think you reiterated this, that this would be an annual review if we decide to adopt it. So area median income changes, or we want to change the percentages, or we want to change the max amount, or whatever it is, we can always do that on an annual basis or stop entirely, right?
Correct. I don't have any... Laurie?
No questions. My comment is I like that it includes the perpetual affordability.
Glenn?
Nope.
Still nothing?
Mm-mm.
Okay. Joy asked my question about the annual thresholds for AMI, when we know what thirty percent is, because we get a new AMI number every year. So it's an early question. I think that this is, you know, like, at the end of the day, truly, this isn't much, but it's a step in the right direction. And I think you've got to walk, before you run, you've got to, what was it? What was a three-year snooze?
Leap, leap, creep, and...
Sleep, creep, leap. You've got to sleep, creep, leap. So we're creeping, right? And so I think that that's good. We're not sleeping anymore. You know, some people here are really good at analogies. I've never admitted to be as good at analogies, but I like to try every once in a while. That's why you say don't try that often. Okay. Thank you. Do you, let's see, we need a motion.
We do. Go ahead.
A motion to adopt the connection fee waiver policy?
Got a motion by council member Sarah.
I'll second.
Okay. And a second by, council member McKnight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, eight point two, the third street bridge reconstruction project. Mr. Lannis?
You have it.
Trying to get control of it again. All right, step one. Jack, you can see the screen. All right. So, good evening, Mayor and Council here. We're going to be revisiting the third street bridge replacement. So I'll go fairly quickly through some of this because you've seen it before, but stop me if there's anything you'd like to talk a little bit about. But we're ultimately going to just rehash the history real briefly and talk about some recommended next steps. So as you can see, the bridge is, you know, it's, it's in a state of somewhat of disrepair at this point, but that's after a hundred years. It's actually held up quite well. It's over a century that this, this bridge has been. Here is built in nineteen twelve, so it's been inspected recently by the county, and it's finally reaching the end of its service life. So that's, that's a pretty good run, over a hundred years. So it's recommended for replacement at this time, but the challenge so far has been the funding. It's, it's a million-dollar-plus effort to go after this bridge, and it's, it's an expensive endeavor for something that might make it another year. And so this is always a challenge with structures, is how much more life can you get out of them at this point? That's why they have sufficiency ratings, and it gets to the point where, where it changes categories into what's called structurally deficient, where there's, there's some element of the bridge that is considered significantly deficient, to the degree that repair and replacement should be planned. And that's where, that's where this is right now. It's recommended for replacement as a result, concerned about in flood conditions, something coming apart. And when things come apart and floods, you know, everything else with the bridge goes, goes with it. So it's, it's at a point where we're thinking within, within years it should be replaced. It's been looked at in the past. It's, it's been looked at as, as recently as the 2017 street project. The challenge was, of course, the money, the funding to replace it at the time. So a few options were, can we leave it in place, just put a trail over the top of it, limp along a little bit further. Ended up with a one-way section over it to reduce some of the, the traffic over the top, and ultimately planned for another date to replace the structure. And so that's really where we are today. It hasn't gotten any cheaper to replace. It hasn't gotten any cheaper to replace. Unfortunately, it's, it's still that million-dollar-plus project to do it. But the good news is we have explored some funding alternatives, and I'll, I'll hit the, the good news next because again, the project is still fairly expensive. We did apply for Minnesota Bridge Bond Funds. You've probably heard about it, the state bonding bill. A part of that bonding bill that gets generally passed every other year is Bridge Bond, Bridge Replacement Funds. It's a small segment that they fund at different levels when they, when they pass the bond. And so that money goes into a pot, and that's for replacing bridges across the state. And you can, you can apply for those funds. And we applied for them, thankfully, as a small city because you're still below 5,000 at the time, and there's different funding buckets here for, for small cities and for counties and for state aid cities. And so this went in as a small city, which is important. We've talked about this before, but they're, they're continuing to treat this as a small-city application. What that means is because the city of Carver, actually Carver County is a sponsor, because you were not MSA. Carver County is, is the sponsor for the city of Carver. They awarded you a bond funds. You then must go on to some plans and specifications for the project. Once the state bridge engineer signs those plans and said, yep, it's a good plan. This is what, we'll fix the bridge. It's, it's a, you know, reasonable level of, of aesthetics. Otherwise, again, there's some limitations on funding. They would sign the plan, and then the funding becomes available. Now, the details of the small-city program is because a lot of townships and small cities, they really could never afford to do this. It's just, it's just a reality that many of the, many of those agencies could not come up with the money to do it until the bridges fall down. So they've made it very attractive to, to apply to this program and take care of almost everything such that these bridges get repaired. And so the city would pay a maximum of $10,000 maximum for engineering and expensive, or inspection, yeah. It is expensive to actually design the bridge and administer construction, and $10,000 for construction itself. And so the $20,000 just to take this and build a new one. So the limitations to it are they won't pay for a lot of aesthetics. So you start getting into stone treatments and things that, that the bridge engineer is going to say, this is not necessary here. It's not functional. That gets into a discretionary category in which they'll say, okay, eligible, these, these items, ineligible, these, these items. So we'd have to think about that as we're putting the plans together, and we'd really start with just what's the functional needs here. And then anything above that would be, would be city expense. And then there's flood mitigation, which is unique here. That's a very unique element of this where we are going to have to consider the levy here. Third Street Bridge is a part of the levy system. And when it, if it were to get replaced, there's some elevation.
When it gets replaced.
When it gets replaced, yeah. Very good. When it gets replaced, there's elements of this that tie to elevation of the railings and such, such that when high flood, high elevations of the creek, it wants to hold back at, at Third Street. So there's, there's some things that might go beyond a standard bridge, such that we try and, try and maintain water level behind, behind the structure, railing heights and such. So you might end up with some higher railings than would be normal for a bridge like this. That would be levy or city elements that would, would come out of that. So it's not $20,000 all in unless we just took the bridge down and put it back up again to a minimal functional standard. So there might be some additional expenses. I, I can't detail those out just yet because we're going to have to go through the process of figuring out what, what the levy design implications are. It might be very minimal as far as the function goes, and it might, might actually have some substantial meaning as far as the railing heights and such. But for the most part, we're just going to make it so the levy can tie into it and, and do what it needs to do with that project, basically seal off Third Street.
Can I ask you a question about the railing height? So is the one on Main Street, is that, is that the railing height that we would be thinking of on Third Street?
Well, in this particular case, I believe it would end up being higher. So that, that would be more, I believe, typical.
That one is, or the Main Street one is?
Yeah, yeah. I believe that's going to be closer to standard. In this case, I think we'd be raising it up a couple of feet higher. And so it, it would be, it would be a unique railing height.
Okay. I feel like the one on Main Street is pretty high already.
Can you see over the top of it?
Yeah. I wish I could not be able to see, I'm 5'7", so I'm not going to be able to see over the top of the one on Third.
If, if you're not me, you may not be able to. I will, I'm pretty sure I'll be able to see over the top of it, especially with jumping. But if you're down, down below here, that, that five-foot level is, is going to be.
About five feet is what you're thinking?
It's, it's, it's close. We're going to have to do, do a little bit of hydraulic modeling here. But yeah, that's, it's.
So it'll be about here on me then?
Possibly.
All right.
You might be peeking as opposed to just seeing right over the top. So we'll, we'll get to the bottom of that and let you know as we, as we update this.
Okay, thank you.
That, that is the summary of the cost. So it is a, it's a very favorable, favorable circumstance here right now. But the other side of this is, is there's a reimbursement side of this. This is money that, that is reimbursed to the agency. So there's a cash flow element to this. And so we've talked to the finance director about this and what you'd have to cash flow until reimbursement. The front end of it until the plans are signed needs to be cash flowed by the city. So you need to cash the final plans. And then after that, you can submit for reimbursement. And then when you bid the job and start constructing it, then you can, of course, be reimbursed at, on a monthly basis as you're constructing it. There's a pretty typical process to that. So that generally is not more than a few weeks after, after you pay, pay the bill that you get the money back in, into the system. So the formal next step, and we, we did submit some things into the packet that came straight from state aid as to what is, is normal for a program like this. But it'd be authorize preparation of plans and specifications and get that signed and approved by the state bridge office and bridge engineer, really. And so at that point, there would be authorization to proceed with bridge placement when they sign it. And they say, well, we have money for this bridge now, go bid it. And that would be the next step. And so we're tentatively targeting the fall for that, trying to get that done. They are encouraging to keep this moving because, again, we're in a very exceptional situation where it was a small-city application. They're going to continue treating it as such, but don't want to be looking back at this in three years and saying, well, you've been MSA city for three years, and, you know, this, this makes it a little bit more difficult for them.
Could you say that again? So what are they looking for by fall?
They're looking for the signed bridge plans. They'd like to advance it to the point where the plans are signed. And that's the next step for them, is they have a signed set of plans that they can put on their stack and say, this one's ready. And that's when the money would, would be allocated to the.
Okay. Because your last slide said something about do it in 2022. That's not actual construction. That's approving plans and specs for it?
That's the step. That's the intention, yes. Is get it through to the point where they, they can authorize bidding. And that is continuing the process as far as they're concerned. So we could ideally start some stuff in 2022 for construction, but it, it could start in the spring of '23.
Okay. And though I'm asking for a couple of reasons, because Sixth Street is going under, and then we'd have Third Street going under if it happened in the same year. So, and then just, you know, there's obviously a big town festival. I have to rearrange a few things for you. So, but really, it's because if we're, we're taking one road out and we're taking another road out, that's a lot.
Yeah.
Went on in one year. So that's why I just was trying to be clear if it was just plans and specs that they needed to have in 2022, and then construction is 2023? Or like you said, if something's going to start in 2022?
I'll say it's plans and specs with the understanding that we may not be able to get construction started this fall. And I, I think they'll, they'll appreciate the effort that's been made in 2022.
Can we put that they can start September 12?
September 12? If we can get it September 12.
Then I've got, we've got Seymour days out of the way?
So yeah, there's, there is some flexibility there to try and make sure that things make sense when it's being built. And so we'll take that comment.
Okay, thanks.
So I, I believe with the bullets that you just had on the previous slide, so once we have plans and everything like that, this, we'll get another chance to take a look at any cost changes, right? Because you said we have to look into the tie-in with the levy, right? And hopefully that doesn't add $500,000 onto this, right? That we have to cover, something like that, right? So we'll have another opportunity to say, oh, yep, came within 1.5 million, and all good.
Yes, yes, you would. I'll be keeping close tabs on that.
Okay, that's my only question. Lori?
No, I really like the idea that we keep in mind any of the recommended elements for the future Carver, Carver levy. The hard thing I have is that we probably have to pay for even figuring out what those differences are. And then, then most likely do it. But that would be on the city's kind of expense.
Yeah. It's part of the levy, yeah.
Kristi? Go ahead.
A functioning bridge.
A functioning bridge.
No frills.
A little discretion on that.
No frills and low landscaping, but just make sure, make sure that it's going to tie in with the levy system to be.
Yes.
And I don't care how high the fence is. Keep the jumpers up.
Okay. So my questions, can you, the only aspect of it that it will need to make it levy-compatible is a higher wall railing.
Yeah. The, the other things that we would, on a detailed level that we would possibly get into is if, let's say, there's going to be some walls that come off the, the end of the, the, the bridge railings to kind of go back down Spring Creek.
Okay.
So let's say they're to wrap it around. We might reinforce that area and have rebar such that a wall could be connected into at some later date. That would be the minor planning side of things, so it, it doesn't have to be rebuilt later. The height is the most substantial one.
Okay. And does that height get us a bridge that we will not have to sandbag if it floods?
That would be the intent.
Okay. Because Main Street Bridge, we have to sandbag. So the idea is that it's at a height where we don't have to worry about that unless it's way more than biblical.
Yeah. You have the guy sitting in the room that's trying to figure that out right now as he's, as he's designing some of these things. So Erin, why don't you go ahead and?
Yeah. So as far as the height goes, Main Street is quite a bit lower than Third Street. So relatively speaking, I think the railing would have to be like nine or 10 feet tall at Main Street to eliminate that. So we're, that's not really practical. So we're looking at doing like a, like a stoplog system at Main Street as part of the levy project. So that will still have to be a, a closure scenario. But the goal here is to get Third Street out of that, that need for the sandbagging effort, so it could remain open.
Okay, perfect.
Because we think we can. It's, it's not extreme.
Okay. That is my strong preference. You know, it's, it will be easy to explain a way to the folks in Carver why we're ripping up this bridge five years later because we're getting a really good deal on replacing it. However, if in five more years, we've got to make big changes and amendments to make it, make changes that will be necessary for our end goal of a certified levy, that'll be a little bit harder. So just wanted to make sure that that's clarified. You mentioned the cash flow aspects of it. Do we have enough cash to cash flow this project for a bit?
Are do finance directors working on that?
Okay.
And I'll, I'll offer that she was comfortable with the, the cash flow scenario and was not concerned about it. She had a plan that seemed to work well.
Okay. And I know, I know that this is really time-dependent because it, there's this fear, maybe it's only in my mind, but that the state is going to say, oh, just kidding. You guys are too large of a city to qualify for this. So I get your concerns about Steamboat Day's timing, but I think, you know, the bridge, in my mind, if, whatever we have to do to make sure that we can get this deal from the state.
Yeah, that was not my attempt. My attempt was to say if I have to start moving stuff, because this bridge needs to be done. So don't, I'm not saying move this around Steamboat Day. I mean, if we could, I'm not.
No, no. Let's get this done.
But with this amount of money, I, I think we'll figure something out.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that that was clear. Yeah. I think that's all I had. I know you don't like guessing and throwing numbers out, but if you had to guess how much the levy compatibility aspects of this would end up costing the city, are we talking less than six figures? More than six figures?
I'm, I'm going to guess that this is less than six figures because you're already building the structure, you're building the railings. That's where most of the cost. They'll consider all of the railings to be eligible expenses of a bridge. And you'll say, all right, we have two more feet of concrete. And we sometimes will go back and forth with the agency on, on, on these things, but we can make the case that really it's a material cost difference for, for two more feet of concrete, and that's not six figures. So that would be my guess right now with a little bit of steel. So if I were to take a educated shot at it, I'd, I'd say 40, 40 to 50.
Okay. All right. That, I, do, Brent, maybe this is a question for you. Do you know if we did have additional funds to make it compatible with the levy? If we could use levy funds for that levy bonding money or the money that we got from the feds?
Can you say that again?
Sure. So if we have to pay $40,000 extra to make it levy-compatible, can we use either a DNR grant or the federal grant that we just got for that?
I have to check with Todd. I don't know.
Just curious, because that makes it a little less scary. Although 40 grand, again, is a small price to pay to not have to re-figure things out in five more years. So, all right. That is it for my questions.
I will make a motion to authorize the preparation of plans and specifications for the Third Street Bridge replacement project.
All right, we have a motion by councilmember Mac.
Sure.
And a second by councilmember Henry. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Item 8.3, aren't you glad you came early for that?
That was interesting.
So we are now to the point to make our HPC commission appointment. So I will make a motion to appoint Amy Kudrowski to the HPC as a second alternate with a term expiration of March 1st, 2024.
I'll second that.
Right, we've got a motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by councilmember Mac. Any further discussion?
No. Delighted.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Welcome aboard. Yay! See you in a couple of weeks. Alright, moving on, item number nine, communications, Mr. Mayor.
Just a few items. We're informed today that the evening deputy position is now filled by the county sheriff's office. We have Deputy Ross Heinz, I'm probably not saying that right, but we're working on getting him to a future council meeting to do a meet and greet. And then I met with the team on Petway stations and later the council's last meeting. There are some comments related to expanding that. We're looking at one along, in Lyons Park, kind of along Mount Hope Road, one at Sixth and Broadway and one at Gazebo. Just wanted to check in and make sure that those were acceptable locations.
Yeah?
And then-
Yes.
Just anecdotally, the, we had about, we had a record for reported concerns over the weekend. And I would, I would say probably a ten of them and about half of them were related to pet waste concerns, so-
Because the snow is melting and there it all is.
Right, so, that's all I have, thank you.
I have a question, how are they reporting it? Are they using the website?
Yes.
So it's great that we're able to get an April newsletter, which I think everybody got on Saturday. It was kind of a round robin, you know, the things were. See it, hit the button, and here's where you find it on the website, so.
Yeah.
That's the correlation-
Good data to have, to say, yep, we're doing something.
And I did have an update on how many bags we've used. It's been almost exactly a year. We've used 5,400 bags and we purchased 6,000, so we had to reorder.
Excellent.
So they're being used.
That's impressive, they're being used.
What's that look here?
Really cats?
Don't you use bags for that too?
I know, I do that.
Okay, Joy?
Chad, while you're here, I noticed on Carver Bluffs Parkway off of Jonathan Carver Parkway that some of the potholes have orange Xs in them, what does that mean?
We've been out making our blacktapping list. The, the blacktop plant doesn't open until, I believe it's April 24th, 25th is a Monday?
Yeah.
That's what the planned estimated startup date is, so we're getting our list and we're, we're getting ready to blacktop.
Thank you, I'm looking forward to that, okay. From a communications perspective, we had a recent Southwest Transit meeting, a couple of highlights. The Southwest Transit is working on sustainability goals and strategies plan, largely aligned with what the city of Eden Prairie has done around their sustainability goals and kind of aligning with that. So some of the features of the proposed plan include decreasing their building energy use intensity by 25% by 2030 from their 2015 levels, 100% renewable electricity within their facility use by 2030, zero emission vehicle fleet and equipment by 2050, and essentially net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. They have naturally decreased their greenhouse gas emissions just because of the switch from running the larger buses on the regular routes into downtown in the University of Minnesota and using more of their smaller fleet for a lot of the prime rides. That has really reduced things naturally over time, but those are some of the goals that they're proposing. And they did have their highest prime ridership last week, largely due to the airport service and spring break. People were heavily picking that up, so out of ever, all their records of prime usage.
Did you use prime for going to the airport?
Mm-hmm, I did.
Really? I did not know that.
So you can use prime to get to the Southwest Station in Eden Prairie, park, or you can drive to the Southwest Station and park and take prime to the airport.
They also have a service where they literally pick you up in your driveway and take you all the way to the airport, that's what I did.
Okay, so yeah, so that's then the prime direct.
That's good to know.
Yep, you can do either way.
That's true, good to know.
And it's, I think, pretty affordable relatively to other options to get to the airport and-
Yeah.
Lauren?
Do you have any updates today?
Christine?
Joy, you made me think of something, so, and this is a question for you. The manholes, the, the really big manholes that are on Oak and Fourth and the one right in front of Casey's, why are they sunken so far below the, the grade of the rest of the road?
The frost actually lifts up the road, the structures will stay where they're at. It's the road surface that, that moves with the frost.
Okay, so the, yeah, I didn't know that. So the one on Fourth and Oak Street, e- even around it though, it's pretty, like, it's falling apart?
Yep.
Do we replace, so I know you go patch it, right? But that patch comes out within, it doesn't take long that that patch is out. So what happens there around that manhole?
We'll cut out a section and have a clean seam rather than just filling in a pothole.
Okay.
Where that will pop out eventually.
Because that one I've noticed is, is pretty bad and then it does get patched, but it doesn't stay patched for very long.
Right.
And then Casey's, I think, I don't think that one's just sunken so far, so.
That would be a county road. But-
But that's why on that one, I mean, it's just, so, have we raised, the road raised?
Right.
Road raised.
Alright, so if you can keep that on your, yeah, keep that on your radar for Fourth and Oak.
Yep.
Then we have an HPC meeting next Tuesday. That's about it.
Glenn?
You got nothing?
Alright, I just have a couple of things, updates. We, last Tuesday, we had our, week before, the day right after our super late city council meeting. At nine o'clock, we met here and we had our high performing partnerships with the sheriff's office. So that was something that the mayors and the city managers of Carver, Chan and Victoria all met, along with four, four representatives from the sheriff's department. So Brent forwarded everybody the results of that. And it's a lot like what we did probably four years ago now for our strategic planning, where Richard Firsman helped us kind of come and develop some team norms for that group. Let's see, last week I met with Suzie Guero, who is the Senate's Capital Investment Committee Administrator. And she kind of helped me figure out how the process of working with the Capital Investment Committee is different between the House and the Senate. So for like one, they don't necessarily have hearings for projects like ours. And then we kind of developed, or she gave me some tips and pointers for our roadmap as far as how we can make sure that we are on the right path to try to be, get some money from the Senate side of things before they merge the bills for levy funding from the bonding bill. So there's that, we talked about it a little bit, but I did take Southwest Prime to the airport, it was lovely. It's eight dollars a person with a maximum of, I think it's only like 20 or 25 dollars. So if you have a family of four, it's really not expensive, especially when you figure out what it would cost even if you Ubered.
That's your eight dollars?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Eight dollars each way and they picked me up in my driveway. So it's very, very, very nice. And it's, you know, in their little buses, which are very nice. And then for council requests, and I saw this a while ago, and I'm just getting around to mentioning it, but on the JCP overpass over 212, we talked a lot about doing branding that told folks you are in the city of Carver. And there's the, the water tower, little piece on the bridge, and that's great, and that's very on brand and matches, you know, the city of Carver, but it doesn't say Carver on it anywhere. Is it too late to get Carver written on that overpass?
Let's graffiti the bridge.
So that the-
Joking, I'm joking, I'm joking.
Oh, boy.
Stocking caps on later.
They're gonna call prime for the ride.
Right. Okay, guys, we are so close to the end of the meeting.
So very close, I would say it's not too late, I would, but I would say that we made an attempt for that and MnDOT has a rule, and Dan can jump in on the detail, but unless the overpass is considered kind of in the central part of your community, they won't let you brand it with your actual written name, you can only do the logo. So the example that I was told was that, like, the one that Chaska has, I think, is that on 41 or?
No, it's the pedestrian overpass.
It's a pedestrian overpass.
It's a pedestrian that's considered in the central part of their community, so that's, they made an exception. We'd have to-
Don't you already know you're in Chaska then? Why wouldn't you want to put it on the edges? I'm not yelling at you, Brent, but it seems very strange.
Yeah, am I getting, am I hitting this right? Because I know I made a pretty big push for that, we got denied.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just boil it down to, there's, there's a group of folks that put together policy. They said they don't want written, written names on, on these railings and they, those written policies go down to the engineers who review these requests and they say, no, it's against our policy. You'd have to go to the variance, I think there's a variance process. They either might have, Chaska might have grandfathered in before they were, had formalized things or they, possibly they got a variance, I haven't looked into it. But the gist of it is, is once they set a policy, it becomes very, very difficult and no guarantees that you can override it, so.
Okay, so two questions, what would it take to get a variance? And potentially in 20 years, when Carver's border is two miles west of where it is now, would it become easier to get what will be a very sun faded water tower changed out for something that says Carver?
Yeah, I, I think the way that, that we approach it is, you know, we could go back to them and say, alright, what is, what could we do that says Carver on it? And, and if the only thing they say is variance, then there's a process for that. And you, there's, need a couple of times a year and you go ahead and, you know, try and get an approval through that and that would be the final. But I, I mean, I think in this particular circumstance, the, the staff reps said the policy in this place would not allow it and it, it kind of stopped at that point. However, it would be an exercise to go back and say, okay, it's a big deal. What would be possible and then we, we could give you an update based on that, it's just-
Can I ask a question? Does it just pertain to the railing?
No, it's, it's really, they, they've got a lot of-
Anywhere on the fascia of the bridge?
They got a lot of policies, just as it pertains anything on their trunk highway system in all the city that had issues because of a light bulb being red or green and it's, you know, policy, no-
My recollection, and I'll check tomorrow on my way into work, but Lakeville over 35W has multiple bridges and they have stamped in the concrete on the sides their Lakeville logo and it's painted as well.
I think we talked about that at some extent.
But it's multiple bridges, I'm pretty positive. I'll drive it tomorrow.
I would-
Yeah.
Like, if I'm the only one who feels strongly about this, then I'll back down, but I feel pretty strongly. If the water tower is huge and I, you know, if it's a safety issue, maybe I'd understand, I'd certainly understand. But nobody's gonna make that connection who's driving from the west about, oh, there's even, maybe not even know what the water tower is. You know, I just, it's a bummer that it doesn't say Carver. I'd like to see what we can do to make it say Carver.
I remember when this was going on, trying to see if we could get the name on there and it was a, it was a fight and a fiasco and it was not-
Maybe it's gonna be 80,000, I remember just enough that's there this way.
Well, could we do it? Yeah, I mean, we would have to, were we, are we able to pay for it on our own if we wanted? MnDOT, or it just is a no because the ordinance says no? It's not about the money that they would have to spend to do it?
Yes, it's the two sides of it, I mean, you hit them both. It's, it's, it's the ordinance that, that restricts it, or not the ordinance, it's the, it's their policy. Their signed policy that restricts it, you could pay for it and, yeah, they, they would make you pay for it, I think.
So let's say we had this chunk of money and we said, we're gonna do this and we're gonna pay for it. Can we do that then?
If we can get through the policy.
But we have to ask for the variance.
If we can get through the policy, they'll, they'll, they'll let you invest in there and then-
They'll let us pay money to try to see if we can get it tonight.
Their infrastructure, yeah.
Okay.
And we have experienced going through their signed variance process. Some of you might remember the, well, it's been six or seven years ago maybe with the historic Carver brown signs. We had to go through a variance process with them on that. And so that led to the, part of the requirement was that the sign, like the sign toppers that you see historic downtown Carver had to be installed, that we had to do a kiosk and, I mean, it's an extensive process, it can be done, it has been done successfully. We actually did that at concert with Chaska applying for their historic Chaska signs on 212. It took about, and this isn't me saying we shouldn't do it, but it took about two years, just so you have an idea that it would take that. And then I think it was Mayor Ostradeck and I at the time went down there and met with, it was a group of like five Dans in a meeting. Imagine that.
Tough crowd.
That's funny.
Tough crowd, you came out alive.
Yeah, but we, you know, got letters of support and, but we paid for all the signage related to it. So it can be done, but, you know, Dan is right on it's, a lot of it is just based on precedent and, you know, they're gonna likely point to Eden Prairie and Chanhassen as having logos with no words and so we'll have to construct a, you know, an argument or a, you know, not an argument, but a position on that, so.
Okay.
You know, the status-
It's gonna say Carver. Did we not, did we know it wasn't gonna say Carver? I feel that, okay.
We knew that.
I forgot that part of it. I remember having the discussion, but I thought it was having a, a bridge, you know, like the wrought iron like Chaska has. So I still would like to see it seen.
Need it, not to try to debate this, but like, you know, we could, we could probably, if you wanted something interim, to try to get some type of stamp similar to Lakeville on like-
It's on the concrete part.
On the concrete part, as rather, that might be easier than-
I don't care where it goes, I've seen that and those look sharp too. I just, the whole idea was to identify that this is Carver, you're passing through-
Yeah.
Carver and there's nothing that says Carver.
When you say stamp though, I mean, are we looking at replacing so that we have a stamp, like something-
No, like a painted logo.
Like a painted, yeah, they have it painted, they might, it might be a relief, kind of also within, like-
Yeah.
Pressed, like stamped into the concrete, maybe it was when it was built.
Okay.
But it is painted as well.
It's just painted, okay, that would be fantastic.
Yeah.
They'll likely make us do a signed variance for that, but I think it might be more affordable than the-
No, Joy and I are gonna head up there.
Oh, yeah.
Bring Liam with us.
I've read 165 pages of signed order.
So I'm getting a go from the council on to start work on that?
Yes.
Yeah. We'll see what we can do.
Thank you. Alright, that is it from me, that I would make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember McKnight and a second by Councilmember Henry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion passes, alright, good evening.